So that brings us to the meeting. And we'll commence with apologies, but just before we do commence with apologies, I'd like to welcome Joy Gunn to the meeting. Joy has arrived as, and I'm going to forget your title, Events and Community Development Manager, is that correct? Yes, I might have it the wrong way around. But brings a wealth of experience in the social sector to the city. So we're very lucky to have you on board, Joy, and delighted to welcome you. I think your second day in the job to our community development meeting. So yeah, no maya, hard maya. That brings us to apologies. We had five of them, I think. So an apology from councillor Kelvitt, councillor Vandebus, Mayor Cowell, councillor Hawkins and councillor Thompson. I'll move seconded, thank you councillor Pete. Any discussion on that? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. Confirmation of the agenda. The supplementary agenda item that was circulated was identified as a second number six, which is a little bit unhelpful. So it's been suggested by our Viewery Observatory GSO that we migrate that to effectively number 10, so at the end of the substantive items on the agenda, and that number 10 becomes number 11. With that amendment, I'll move that we, sorry, adopt the agenda as set out on the order paper. Seconded councillor Pete, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. Item three, oh sorry, item four is the declaration of interest, which is just for noting, which brings us to item five, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the grant subcommittee meeting held on the 24th of May. And I'm happy to move that those are noted. Seconded councillor Wilson, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, that's carried. So the Otago Museum. Dr Griffin, welcome, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Kiara?
We're in your hands.
Okay.
Please feel free to make any comments you'd like.
First, I'd like to apologise for the length of the reports. It's been two meetings since we came and reported, so unfortunately you had a lot of reading to do. I do apologise about that. I'm not going to go through in detail what's been going on at the museum, that's summarised quite well in the reports. But before I answer questions, I'd like to point out that it's been a reasonably successful period for the museum. We opened the Planetarium on the 5th of December. So yesterday afternoon, we've had 21,098 people through, which in a 51-seat theatre demonstrates that it's quite a success. We have recently been awarded $400,000 from the lottery to fund a Talke digitisation project. The museums arteera conference two weeks ago, we won three awards. The Beautiful Science Gallery won Best Museum Project, the Hakui Women of Kaithahu won the Best Maori Project, and the Planetarium won a special award. We have also just heard from the Otago Community Trust that we'll be getting $500,000 towards the renovation of Discovery World, 500,000. So in many different ways across the museum, whether it's in the science engagement, whether it's in the humanities work and in the research at the collections, we're on a bit of a roll at the moment and things are going reasonably well. In terms of attendance this year, we're roughly 20% up on last year, and we think we'll have close to 350,000 visitors this year, and that's accurately counted. I know there's some questions about that in the past. So that's a sort of top-level summary. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Pete.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Ian, yeah, a lot of reading, but very good reading anyway, and thank you for your report. I'd just like to add to the kudos that you've just given the museum, one for you, of course the PM's Science Communicator Award, and we congratulate you on that. I'm just wondering, and that's on page 27, just wondering, and then you talk about, you know, leverage off of all the scientific outreach and work that we're doing at your museum, if there are any activities of leverage that you'd like to add?
Absolutely, yes. Some people ask why we do the science engagement at the museum. I think it's part of what we have to do. Part of the role of the museum is to inspire the young people of this region to take an interest in science, technology, engineering arts and maths, because there's lots of evidence that shows that kids who go to museums and have positive experiences are much more receptive to go on at school and study the sciences. And that's good for this region, because we want our young people to have those skills. In terms of science engagement activities, it's not just here in Dunedin that we're doing stuff, we're partnering with the university. And there's this thing called Lab in a Box, which is a laboratory that sits in the back of a 20-foot container that travels around. And we've been to Awaka, we've been to Mount Cook, Omuru, Clutha, it's been all over the place. And basically, the lab is delivered to a school or a community group. A bunch of scientists from the museum and the university turn up and engage the local population in science activities. We've also been to Tomahawk Lagoon, where I think they were sampling water quality. And this is a way of getting the local, young people especially, engaged with science research and hopefully changing their attitudes to it and in getting them more excited about it. And also, we're getting quite a lot of funding to do this work, and that's not coming from the council in this case, a lot of the funding's coming from MBIE. The museum's been quite successful in receiving grant funding to support this work, not just in Dunedin but across Otago.
Councillor Wilson.
Just because I'm in privileged position of knowing the answer to this question, but I think it's one that's important to ask, it's fine to say that you've obtained 500,000 from the Community Trust of Otago, but I think it's important also to say what the contribution from the museum itself will be and the investment in that project in proportion.
Yes, well, I mean, across the museum, between the Planetarium project, the reboot of Discovery World and the reboot of the learning facilities, the museum's investing, the total project costs about $3.5 million. Of that, roughly a million has come in now through external sponsorship, but we're investing roughly $2 million, $2.5 million of our reserves in these projects. And these are reserves that have been built up over many years, and we're investing in these now because they're important to build facilities that are inspiring for local people, but also the investment in these repays itself over the long term. So we do charge admission for Discovery World and the Planetarium, and that money helps offset the running cost of the museum. And we're very grateful, I should have said that at the start, thank you very much for your continuing support of the museum. The ratepayers of this town give just about $4 million towards the running cost of the museum. We're very proud that we generate roughly 3.9 million through our own activities. So for every dollar we do receive from ratepayers, we're roughly matching that in terms of our own activities to support the running cost of the museum. And that's how we've managed to double the size of the collections team, certainly since I've been director in three years, we had about six people when we started. We're now up to 12, 13 people, working core business, looking at the collections, researching the collections, making sure that they're available for future generations. And that's core museum work, and we think that's very important.
Further questions?
Yes, Ian, I was just going to wonder, I did read that you, or I understood your message very clearly about that there's an accurate counter at the museum now, but you know, since the Planetarium, like how much have actually increased on a weekly, monthly basis? Like, are we nearly double what we were two to three years ago, or not quite?
Well, no, I think the way I would prefer to say is we're at least between 15, 20% up year on year. Last year, we had just over 300,000 people through the door. This year, we're probably going to be close, at the end of this month, we'll probably be close to 350,000. So that's not doubling at all, but it's a significant increase. And one of the interesting things we've found is that we were expecting when we opened the Planetarium that the Discovery World attendances would go down. We thought people would choose one versus the other, but actually Discovery World has actually had the most successful year since about 2009. So we're getting more people coming into Discovery World and going to the Planetarium, which means we're broadening the audience.
Do you have a feel for what percentage of the visitors to the museum are visitors to the city versus residents?
I don't have the latest results. We take part in the Museums Arteera survey, and we just did that about sort of three or four weeks ago, and I haven't seen the results. But I believe that something between 40, 50% of our visitors come from the Otago region, the rest are from outside. It's sort of there or thereabouts. I don't actually have the accurate numbers, but I can send them to you, or have them for the next meeting.
Any further questions? If not, I guess my question relates to the participatory science project, and I know that that was a pilot and that you've extended it to the end of 2016. Are there any indications that that might be further extended, or is it too early to have any indication of that?
Well, yes, just to remind councillors what that is, the participatory science platform was an MBIE project that basically they created three pilots around the country, one in Dunedin, Otago, one in Taranaki and one in South Auckland. And the aim was that they would fund, give grants out to local community groups to do science research in partnership with the university. It was for one year initially, it's been rolled out for a second year. We really don't know at this stage whether MBIE will continue the pilots. They may choose to continue them, they may choose to shut them down and do them somewhere else. At this stage, we don't know, but we very much hope that they, from my perspective, it's been a big success. We've got community groups across Otago getting funding for this, from the, not the rail trail, from the Naesby doing something to do with the night skies, we've had people in Tomahawk Lagoon sampling the water. There are moth projects as well, and these are all community groups being funded to do this stuff. I'm very hopeful that we'll continue, but it's in the minister's hand.
Yeah. I hope so too. Page 33, the Planetarium admission numbers. I was interested to see, and I mean, I know that you're looking at developing, I guess, new content which will generate new interest, and you would expect to see some drop-off, I imagine, from, you know, with a bang, you could have big audiences in your first couple of months. Is the drop-off that you've seen, is that sort of in line with your expectations, and has that sort of reached a bit of an equilibrium, or have you seen another jump as you introduce new content?
Well, it's actually doing what we thought it would do. In school holidays, you pretty much can't get a ticket.
Right.
So there are only 300 tickets a day, because we have 51 seats in six shows. But outside school holidays, it's actually, the public attendance is relatively not as popular, you don't get as many people through the door, but we're still seeing people, I mean, Amazing Universe was the opening show that we did, and it's still the most popular show. So I think we've still got a long way to go. And really, in terms of the marketing, we haven't been particularly aggressive, we did a relatively soft launch, because we wanted to make sure the systems worked. The worst thing when you do something like this is if everything breaks down on day one. Now, it's worked perfectly, thank heavens, but I would be hopeful that these numbers will be strong. Our first-year projection for the entire calendar year was 25,000 people. We're already at 21,000 in about sort of seven months, so we're looking to hit maybe 30, 35,000. And the Planetarium breaks even, I think, with 15,000 people through the door. So from that perspective, it's been a big, big success. And of course, what we're also seeing is lots of schools coming through. This is the period of Maturiki, and we've had, this is the popular time for school groups to come through and do their astronomy segment at schools. So it's obviously, from the museum perspective, it's a brilliant educational facility, but we're now seeing the schools coming through. And of course, Perpetual Guardian are sponsoring the visits to some of those schools, so the low-desire schools get reduced admission prices and help bringing buses into the city as well. So that's all part of the package that we agree with Perpetual Guardian to make sure that the thing is actually not just there, it's there to be visited and used by the local people.
Brilliant, thank you. As a mover for the report, move councillor Pete, seconded councillor Wilson, thank you very much. Any discussion? I'd just note that I went to visit my parents in Mooreaki last week and hand-delivered the local rag, and on the very front page was the visit of Lab in a Box to Hampden School, and these kids absolutely amping on it. So yeah, pretty neat to see that doing the rounds. Any further discussion? If not, councillor Lord.
I'd just like to repeat the sentiment that's already gone round, but I just think you're doing a fantastic job, and the museum's going very well, and we do appreciate that. And we do understand that perhaps 60% of your visitors are from outside of the city, and they're coming here and they're spending other money while they're here, and that's great, so thank you.
No, thank you, and thank you for your continuing support as well as councillors. We don't say that often enough, but we do appreciate the support we get from the city and the ratepayers of Dunedin.
Further debate? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. Thank you very much, Ian. That brings us to item seven, which is the update on the Archibald Baxter Memorial Trust proposal. And I guess that means we've got Jeanne Deen and Richard joining us. Welcome to you both, and would you like to open with any comments?
I guess we've heard a fair bit about it in public forum, but we've had a number of very productive meetings with the trust, discussing the sites and spent the afternoon walking a number of the sites, museum, the Albany Street site, the Botanic Garden, Woodhall Gardens, and discussing some other options. And while there were pros and cons for each of them, this is the one that I guess stood out for the trust and from our point of view is available, and ticks a number of boxes for them in terms of its visibility to the public, both pedestrian and traffic, and the ability for them to create a memorial within the timeframes that they're looking at, and have that installed within budget as soon as possible. So we really allowed the trust to make that decision on the information they had, and they came back to us with the preference for the site, and that's what I guess we're presenting in the update report. So happy to take any questions on that.
Super. Councillor Wiley.
The location, there was a great photo, are you able to pull the photos up again, Pam? The land that it's located on is obviously DCC land.
Correct.
Is there any name of, you know, is it a park, like, look at the photo there?
It's, no, it was actually, and it may still be paper road, but it's available for us to use, as we've currently used it as a bedding plant, planting area. There's no name for it.
So would there be the ability to name it the Archibald Baxter Park, or Reserve, or something along those lines, as to be part?
I would have to, would have to look into that as far as the naming of areas that are currently paper road, but it's something that could be looked at in the future.
Okay.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Mr Saunders, can you tell us why the museum site that had been considered for a long time was discounted, please?
I can tell you, my understanding of why they came to this as their preferred site was around the risk to their timeframes from the process we would need to go through. It certainly wasn't discounted by us as an option. But in terms of the ability for the previous resolution around consultation with user groups or relevant user groups and the process we would have needed to go through, and the potential for possibly having objections or concerns raised around the museum reserve, and they had been in some discussions, weighed in their decision to come back to us with this as a preferred site, but it wasn't discounted by staff.
Councillor Noon.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The two representatives that were here earlier, I assume you heard them speak, I got the impression that some of their wider, wider group that they're working with may not have appreciated how committed the council to this project. Is it the impression that you got, and is there a need to reinforce that in the recommendations? So I just sensed that perhaps it's some of the artists that have perhaps been a little concerned about not being able to nail the site. I just, I sensed some negativity, and I'm just asking the question, do we just need to make it absolutely clear that we're as keen as they are to finalise and establish the site?
Yeah, I think there's been some frustrations from some of the artists around the time it's taken to settle on a site. I think the trust, and certainly the trust members we've met with, there haven't been, I haven't sensed any of that from them.
Councillor Bezit.
Yeah, Richard, I personally don't think it's a good site, but I'm certainly not going to get in the way of the trust, because I know the background and I know the difficulty they've had in identifying a place where they want to put this memorial. I don't think there's a lot of foot traffic. Certainly, there's a lot of people go past each day, and someone could say, well, that's a lot of foot traffic, but they're the same people, they're people heading down to the university to work or down to the retailing area and going back home again at night. So you're not getting people wandering along and looking and saying, hey, what is this? Or driving past and saying, I wonder what that is, I'll stop and go back and have a look. That just won't happen. So is there some way that this site can be made, and I'd like the flower beer too, by the way, that was something that I thought it was particularly nice to have at the, when you came up Albany Street. But is there some way of making this site more attractive than what it is for people who may walk along that way to the motels or whatever and go across and have a look? If you've got something sitting up off the footpath, they're going to wander on by. You need something that's going to make it attractive, and I don't know whether they can do that. There is infrastructure underneath, I believe, and I do know there is problems with the site, that we've had slippage here at some time in the past. So, you know, I probably reserve my decision until such time as I see the design. Somebody might come up with something very clever, but I think, you know, that site needs a lot of preparation to make it attractive. Do you agree with that? I just got a question.
Might be more of a question for my colleague over there. No, I think what has been recognised and part of the discussions we've been having with them and the reason why we're looking very closely at the services and the restrictions that that may or may not place on the design is that there needs to be some work there in terms of creating an attractive space for them to use. And there are some options for them to actually cut into the bank and create some seating areas and design a sculpture around that, rather than just place something on the bank. So, and that's what they'll be working with their artists on, is designing that sort of space.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be helpful to be clear though, Richard, that it's not intended that the design comes back to this committee, it would be decided by the artists, sorry, the trust in discussion with staff.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Staines.
It was mentioned that there is some infrastructure that passes through the site. Is that significant, and is there any way that we can avoid the added costs of having to design, or for them having to design for this memorial to be able to be lifted out and put back, or is it running right through the middle?
We've sat down with the trust and our water and waste team and looked at the infrastructure that's in the ground and discussed with them how they'll need to build depending on different weights. So until we've got sort of a design, we can't indicate exactly how to do that. They can either have a flat platform or some piles around it, but the infrastructure isn't going to prohibit a final design.
So is the infrastructure such that the memorial needs to be able to be lifted out?
Yes, yes, yeah, it's water pipes, yep.
Just to confirm then, that would impact to some degree on the extent of cut that's in, that's also, yep. Councillor Wilson.
I just wanted to challenge someone thinking of councillor Bezit on this. I can't think of a better site to get through every side of the potential monument scene without requiring infrastructure of hard surfacing. And also, how fortunate it is to be beside the best ice cream shop in Dunedin. And providing, if you can provide the seating spot to give the people that are going to that ice cream shop a chance to sit and relax, which isn't there at the moment around that area. So I think, I think it's actually a really clever site to have chosen, and it's one that I, because I do use Albany Street a lot, see it as very visual. So yeah, I don't have, share that concern, and I'm delighted with that choice, well done.
Councillor Benson-Pope. Is that what you were saying?
It's an M.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Well, I think that we've come to the end of questions, so you happy to move?
Oh, I'm happy to move the recommendations, Madam Chair. I think it's appropriate that people, I'm glad people have been alerted to the fact that we're not going to have anything designed by a committee, and that experts will be the ones who will make any final approval or not.
May I just pause you there and see if we can get a second for your motion?
There is a second.
Seconded councillor Pete, thank you very much.
There are nine seconders, I'm sure. In supporting this, I've already made clear my reservations about the site, and they're not unlike councillor Bezit's. But I think that we should be embarrassed by the delay that's already taken place around this proposal, and so for that reason alone, I certainly won't support a delay. I hope they can come up with something, their designers can come up with something that is appropriately striking, because recognition of the contribution of the Sun of Dunedin to our country is long overdue in this sense, in his home. And I think, as I say, I think it's important that we make progress sooner rather than later, and with the qualification of how long it has taken, which I think should embarrass us, I hope, and I'm sure this will end up being yet another treasure for the city in terms of urban design and our history.
Thank you, councillor Benson-Pope. I'm just wondering whether you would be willing to include in your motion a fourth point along the lines of that signal by councillor Noon, that the committee reconfirm council's support of the trust proposal to commemorate the actions of Archibald Baxter and fellow conscientious objectors during the First World War.
Certainly.
Thank you. And you're happy with it, councillor Pete? Thank you. Okay, with that, are there speakers to those four motions? Councillor Wilson.
I, and I maybe I should have asked the question of the speakers at the public forum, but I had anticipated they had thought there was a quantum required to get the design up. Are you aware of what that, to get the design for this, because I've already invested funds, do you know any idea what that quantum's likely?
I am aware that the, they had some costings for the original designs that had been drafted for the site on museum reserve. Those were, I'm not sure that they were necessarily what they expected, so I think that when they go back out for a call for, for new proposals, they may have some greater specification around that. I'm not sure whether, to staff, or perhaps Glen, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, it had incurred some costs as well, because the process they ran was that they sure as hell they provided those artists or designers a small fee to take it from a concept to a model stage. So they'll probably be running that process again, so I think they would have dealt with some of that cost. But the others seem to notice that part of the reason that they're also keen to move it was that one of their grants runs out quite soon, so they don't get that away.
Apologies, I had understood that they'd asked for a, potentially for a financial contribution, I just wanted to make sure that it was raised towards that process.
I don't think they were planning to have a credit exposure as well, or they were planning to come to grant or tie that process.
I think it would be fair to say that if they were seeking council funds, there are a number of different avenues that are available to them, none of which would necessarily come to this committee. So, but they are certainly in communication with all of the relevant staff that would assist them with those processes.
Okay, and I just wanted to know where they were at the...
Are there any further, I'm just working with Pam to get the final wording together for that last part of the motion, but are there any additional speakers to the motion? Well, you just bear with me for one minute. Oh, you've got it? Okay, wonderful. Well, I'd just like briefly to speak to this. I'd like to reiterate the thanks that councillor Benson-Pope has already extended to the trust for, I think, their stamina in this conversation. Certainly, they have gone out of their way to endeavor to find the smoothest path forward for this project. They have been steadfast in their desire to work positively and collaboratively with the council, and to ensure that this is a really positive commemoration and that all of the... really positive commemoration and that all of the sentiment around it is really positive. So I really commend them for that. I'd also like to extend some really sincere gratitude to Glenn for his work with this group early on and to park staff and art staff who stepped in and assisted with the latter part of this process. I think the outcome that we've come to is a really positive one. It's one that the trust is really happy with and certainly is a prominent site in our CBD which is fitting for such an important memorial. So with those thanks, I will invite councillor Benson Pope to exercise his right of reply. If not, I'll put that motion, all those in favour, all those four motions, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, that's carried. Thank you very much. That brings us to item eight, which is Parks and Rec Activity Report update for quarter ended 30th of March. Richard, do you have any comments you'd like to make? So I guess maybe I'll just quick off with a quick question. It would be fair to say that this is a first iteration?
Yes.
Along the lines of the way that Ruth introduced them yesterday?
Yes.
It's a bit of a work in progress and that over time we may see some things shifting.
Yeah, certainly. So as was discussed at yesterday's committees, these are the first version and we're doing a lot of work at the moment on a lot of these measures and I guess trying to find measures that are meaningful for council. So I think you will see them change. Some of the measures that we're, how we're presenting them or may change in the future, but this is, hopefully gives a good first snapshot of where we're at.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Great to see this stuff and you heard the comments I made yesterday about it in another area. One of the consequences though is that there are implications on the presence of staff to answer questions about such graphs. I mean, for example, do we have the capacity to answer a question about the slightly lower than anticipated or lower than last year attendance rates at the Art Gallery? And I'm not necessarily asking, but there was, if I thought there was someone?
I think you might have jumped a header report.
Yeah, I couldn't answer that question for you.
But I'm sure that?
I have jumped, yes. Always a header thing.
And do you have any, I'm sure that Richard would be happy to answer any specific questions that might exist about number of fields, sports field bookings for example? No? Any other questions on the report? Councillor Wiley.
Richard, I guess one of the parts that sort of stood out to me was four parks and recreation buildings had asbestos. Paragraph seventeen on page fifty-seven. How are we dealing with that?
Yes, so we've recently undertaken some testing on a number of buildings and are working through those. One of those four was very minor asbestos that was found at the bandstand, the Botanic Garden, that's already been remediated. Doubt there was no, no risk there and we got some contractors in very quickly to deal with that to prevent any future risk. There's also been, would have been or might have been aware through the media release some time ago, some asbestos found at Moana Pool, which would be expected of a building that age. None of that asbestos is in areas that are open to the public. Most of it's within the plant room or sort of in under, under the building. And again, we're working through a process at the moment. First of all, ensuring that all of our staff or any visitors to the building are safe and kept safe. And secondly, developing a plan at the moment to deal with that asbestos and have it removed in a safe way before it becomes more of a problem. The other two buildings, one is our storage yards at Tahuuna, which is sort of in between the showgrounds and the golf course, the storage yards that are there. They're used by contractors and staff and again will require some remediation to remove the asbestos there. And the Sims Building in Port Chalmers is the other one. We've been working very closely with the yacht club who were using that to ensure they have access to the gear that they need and again going through a process to plan the remediation of that building. So they're under control. First and foremost, with public and staff safety and then secondly, the plan to remediate.
Okay. Through the chair, I guess to Simon. Sue's left, so is there any awareness in the DCC and other buildings built in a similar era that they would be looking and doing an audit of them just for asbestos? Because to see four buildings come up.
Yeah, I can probably, and Kevin can jump in, but what we're doing now is trying to identify all of those across departments and ensure we have a register that's accurate. And then where required, the appropriate actions taken. But I know there's been some work in property already. We're undertaking it as our other departments so that first of all, we have a good picture and a register and then from there through priority and risk.
So a good, strong proactive approach to it.
That's right.
Awesome. Okay. On page fifty-six, the cremations and burials, most of the cremations, thank you. Has Hope and Sons came on board with their crematorium when? Recently, November. So that would have been the changes in that period? Okay, awesome. And then as we briefly discussed yesterday, page fifty-eight, twenty-four to twenty-eight on Ocean Beach, really good updating reporting that Tom has been doing and yourself on keeping that all current and community advised. So thank you.
Councillor Peach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Richard, yeah, congratulations on this report. It's really useful to have an update quarterly of all the varied work that your department does. I'm just, just a couple of questions. Page fifty-seven, customer escalations. Anyone coming from outside might wonder what that means. Does that mean complaints or does it mean something more than complaints?
Complaints or service requests is probably a better description. So if a customer calls requesting a, it may be a complaint about the state of a piece of playground equipment or some broken glass on a field. So either a request to service or a complaint might be a good way to describe it and that just reflects the, how we're addressing the, in a timely way or not is the case for being and how we might intend to fix that.
Yeah, I just wonder whether escalation is the right term, but anyway, I'll just leave you with that thought.
Yeah.
Feedback or something like that might be more neutral. An increased number of camping escalations over Easter, was that in particular sites or where was that happening?
No, not in particular sites, just in terms of how busy that period was with Easter and anniversary weekend. I think it was falling within that, if I got that right, within that week. We did have a significant increase in freedom camping throughout the city and with that came an increased number of calls. But nothing, nothing that wouldn't have been expected given the way those holidays fell and nothing really concentrated on individual sites.
Just moving over the page to paragraph fifteen, staff changes. Are you still on track to appoint a volunteer coordinator and a biodiversity officer this month?
Biodiversity officer, yes. Volunteer coordinator, we have confirmed docs' support for that role and appointing a volunteer coordinator that will operate across the conservation volunteering platform, if you like, with Department of Conservation and City Council. They are finalising their comments on the position description, so we're probably running another week to two weeks to get that advert up. So it might be mid-July as opposed to first of July.
Great. Councillor Lord.
Richard, I just noted that the Botanical Gardens renewed their six star status and that's equivalent of having international significance. Who measures that? Obviously it's not something we do ourselves.
Sorry, I'm not sure of the exact title in terms of the association that does it. It's not ourselves. It's an external independent audit that's undertaken on a two-year cycle.
Do you know where that rates us within New Zealand?
So we're the only local government Botanic Garden that has a six star rating. So we're the only council garden that's rated a six star. There are others around, but as I understand it, we're the only council garden.
Thank you.
Any fifth questions? Oh, sorry, councillor Hall.
Regarding the TB outbreak we've had, I'll see you in thirty-two, the next steps. Are you negotiating with TB Free to do a blanket for the whole town or for the cost of control?
No, so that information that we're now aware of gives us an opportunity to discuss with them. What we're looking to do with pest control across the city is have more of a coordinated approach with a number of agencies, whether they're the volunteer or community groups or agencies such as TB Free. And I think if they are doing more of, or an increased program through the city, it would be wise of us to get on board with that program rather than running our own separate programs. So we'll make sure we have those discussions with them.
At the present time, they're doing from Pine Hill right through to White Addie, Port Chalmers and the back of Ravensbourne.
Okay, that brings us to, sorry Neville, I think you were.
I was prepared to move in the noting of the report.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Hall, oh, thank you. It's moved. Neville, seconded councillor Hall. Any discussion? If not, I'll put that motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, that's carried. That brings us to Community Arts and Culture Non-Financiality Report. Bernie, welcome. And Nicola. And Simon, I think you're gonna.
Just through the chair, just as an introduction to this, we talked a little bit earlier about these set of reports being, I guess, a straw man. So it's the first time that we've presented this to the council in this form, this non-financial information. So we've had some really good feedback already. And I guess this is just a first cut. We acknowledge that it's not perfect. There are some things in here, particularly around the, I would guess, the qualitative reporting back that's probably missing from here. So the goal is to move that into this report as well. So every quarter you get an idea of not just quantity of visitor numbers, for example, but you also get an idea of the efficiency but also the experience that people are getting when they visit facilities or they are potentially were reporting back on policies and plans that we have falling out of our strategic framework. So this is really a first cut. It's a starter, but all your feedback is very welcome and I'd be interested to hear on your feedback. And so I've obviously invited Bernie and Nicola along to address any questions that you might have as well. Thank you.
Questions councillors? Councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you. I wonder if someone can tell me why, with the exception of January, the noticeable difference in the figures last year on year at the Art Gallery?
Through the chair, I can provide some comment on that. Essentially, there's a natural ebb and flow with visitor numbers depending on the nature of the exhibitions that are at the gallery. The, in the report, the gallery visitation was down at the point at which it was measured, but I've got a high level of confidence that the visitor numbers will either meet or exceed last year's level based on the recent exhibition that we've got running at present with the coloured dots, which have pretty much filled the room at the moment. Council may also remember that last year we had a bumper year where we had some excellent and highly, highly popular exhibitions with the Lego Blockbuster Exhibition was one example. So we're sort of coming off a pretty high base and in the year to date, as reported, we weren't quite at the same level.
Any further questions? Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you. So it was moved, councillor Noon seconded councillor Staines. Any debate? If not, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, that's carried. Thank you very much Bernie, Nicola.